22 regular meeting of the Fairfield Board of Education is called to order present. We have Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, myself, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Cummings, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Max and Connolly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. I ask you all to please rise to the pledge. Ms. Jacobson, will you lead us in the pledge? Our students were not joining us tonight coming off of midterms, but they will be with us at our February meeting. So we'll move right on to public comment. Can I just ask how many people are just here for public comment? Just raise your hand. Okay. All right. So we, I think we're good. We'll have three minutes per speaker. Okay. Three minutes per speaker. I just asked when you come forward that you give your name and address for the record. We take public comment on agenda items only, and we do not discuss personnel matters. And I just ask that we keep the discourse civil. So I invite our first commenter to come forward. Forward. Button on the mic you just have to press. Does this work? Okay. Sorry.
Sarah Matthews, 230 Penfield Road. Good evening. First, quickly, thank you to the board for all your work. I know that it can be a very time-consuming and thankless elected volunteer position. I understand that these COVID policies are currently in place across the district. I just wanted to point out the overarching issue of inconsistency and lack of communication between the central office and schools. I know the intensity of the protocols can vary wildly between schools and even between classrooms within schools. As such, I would like to know how any of them are actually making a difference, and most importantly, would appreciate the board having a goal to alleviate these measures and not extend them as we head into the last few months of the school year. Before I continue, I just wanted to say that I have two children in public elementary school, and they're both very lucky. They have incredible teachers who have made the best out of this situation. I couldn't ask for more from them, so I'm very grateful, just for the record. I realized today while volunteering to help set up a little thank you for our teachers and staff that I hadn't seen my son in school since February 2020. And I haven't been back, you know, I haven't seen him, aside from dropping him off since September 2020. I haven't been able to volunteer in my children's classroom for crafts or reading since my son was in kindergarten, and in just a few short months, he'll be an incoming third grader. However, it's not about how I feel. It's about how our children have lost or never had things in their school experience. My kindergartner, an incredibly empathetic child who thrives off of caring for others, especially with her friends, and, sorry. You know, she, with the rigidity of these policies, it really does have an effect on even the smallest moments for her, from not being able to hold hands with her friends, chat with friends other than the ones she's had at lunch, or she's with at lunch. These policies keep her from being able to truly articulate her feelings and express of character and for what point. Meanwhile, in addition to lamenting about this chopped, you know, his chopped hands from hand sanitizer and all that stuff, my second grader now has the constant worry that he is, quote, "going to get someone sick." This particular psychological burden that we have placed on our children is nothing short of an abomination, and these policies only reinforce this fanatical notion that our children are imminent threats. Please do not vote to extend the COVID policies in place. In addition to them hindering our children's development, they are unnecessary as they aren't even consistent across schools and even within schools themselves. Lastly, I understand that the General Assembly is going to vote on the emergency executive orders, including the school mask mandate, rather than extending Lamont's powers collectively as parents. We implore our state reps to demand a public hearing, just as we have come before you, our, sorry, lovely Board of Ed, a number of times, to be heard at a public hearing for an executive order.
Thank you, Ms. Matthews. That was three minutes. I'm sorry. I'm just trying to keep time. I appreciate your comments. Thank you. It's okay. Hi. Just press the, press the button, like.
Hold it. Got it. Emma Burnett, 24 Cambridge Street. Good evening. This is my first time speaking to the board. I have two kindergartners in Fairfield Public School. I appreciate you taking the time to listen to my comment tonight, and I'm here to continue Sarah's previous comments on mitigation strategies in schools currently. Not specifically that of masks, but I wanted to take a brief moment to thank those on the board who have advocated for our children and for mask choice in schools. We understand the General Assembly is going to vote on emergency executive orders, and we appreciate your advocacy on mask choice. I'm here tonight to continue the conversation about unnecessary and harmful mitigation strategies that are currently being employed in our schools. My understanding is that of mid-December, the plan was to make schools a more nurturing environment, given that mask mandates are still in place. Since the holiday break, this plan clearly got pushed to the side. These mitigations that have been put into place are even more draconian than they were before. Kids are really hurting and suffering. Here's what many kids and parents have said to us in an elementary setting. I know there are some gentlemen here tonight from the high school setting who are going to talk to you, but my daughter told me today, "We never get to hold hands, high five, hug, do knuckles with our friends. There's no place for human contact in schools anymore." My son misses the Reading Buddy program, playing with teachers without being, playing with their friends without being told to distance themselves, seeing expressions and faces on their teachers and classmates, not being constantly told they're doing something wrong for wanting to be with friends, hugging friends, classroom setups, desks for kindergartners not at tables, seeing smiles. One student said, "I wish I didn't have to look down and count how many squares I am away from my friends." This is being silly and seeing her friends be silly, being able to move around in their classroom. One student said, "School isn't fun anymore, then there's no fun things that we do." Assemblies, class parties, field trips, fun school-wide events, class photos, excuse me, the school store, singing and music, circle time, and the, just the constant reprimanding of young children, five-year-olds, if their mask slips, not yet being yelled at for being too close to each other, not being yelled at for keeping six feet away, being yelled at when playing at recess. One little girl said that, one little girl's mother said that she has dreams, constant nightmares that her mask won't stay up, and she keeps trying to pull it up so she won't get in trouble. These mitigation strategies are very much hurting our children, and they're unnecessary. These kids have gone through so much in the past two years. And I want to be clear, I'm not blaming teachers. My children's teacher is wonderful. She's immediately addressed concerns that I've had. However, teachers are following what's being told to them, which can be confusing for everyone. It's important, I believe, for whoever is in charge of imposing these strategies to address these issues and have consistency throughout the schools. And again, like I said, this is from an elementary setting. I have five-year-olds. However, this doesn't include the older children, who, there is a mental health crisis that's gripping our teenagers right now. It's heartbreaking.
Thank you for your comment. I'm sorry.
So, thank you.
Please, please. No, no, I'm sorry. We just don't applause for public comment.
Hello. My name is Nathan Balvender, and this is my brother Tyot Balvender. We live at 88 Home Fair Drive, and we are freshmen at Fairfield Lord High School. We need Hartford to hear you. We need our legislators to hear you. We need to be heard. We need no more rules that make no sense, no more limited access to school life and activities, no more lines in the hallways, one-way corridors, and do not enter signs, no more muffled conversations, no more not knowing what our friends fully look like, no more teachers struggling to understand us or not knowing if we are happy or sad, no more struggling to breathe while playing sports or in gym class, no more announcements about wearing masks properly or reprimands for them slipping below our noses, no more friends and siblings struggling, anxious and sad, no more timed snacks for elementary We need to understand why these rules only happen to us. We need to smile and be heard. We need to join our friends in the stands for a Friday night basketball game. We need to know what our teachers look like and sound like. We need to see our teachers' responses to our questions and ideas. We need to laugh undeterred. We need to believe we are safe and to not see fear all around us. And above all, we need to regain our childhood. We need to be heard. We need normal. You are our voice. Hartford needs to hear from you. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, boys. I'm going to ask again. Please, no applause after public comment.
Hi. Amy Sparazza, 322 Brambley Hedge Circle. In early March 2020, when I was terrified and begging my husband to work from home, he said to me, "I know this is scary, but there will be another side to this pandemic. There's another very ugly side to COVID in the form of an entire generation of children with psychological trauma." In 2020, we didn't know better. We didn't know the true risk of COVID to kids. We didn't have life-saving vaccines, nor did we have treatments. Nearly two years later, we do know better. We were told that masking young kids was well tolerated and not to worry about long-term effects. The AAP either never imagined that states like Connecticut would mandate these untested experimental interventions for years on end, or they were purposely ignoring everything we know about child development. We're watching the fallout of these interventions in real time. Our own special education department needs an additional, excuse me, $3 million next year to support the increase in speech delays and psych evaluations. I'm grateful to the majority of this Fairfield Board of Education. Most of you sitting here right now fought for our children and understand the necessity for choice. Thank you for the letter that you wrote last year supporting us. This one-size-fits-all, unflinchingly rigid mask mandate is not about keeping anyone safe. It's not about keeping teachers safe. It's not about keeping the elderly safe, and it's certainly not about keeping kids safe. It's about funding, $50 million in exchange for our kids covering their face all school, in school all day long and impeding their breathing and social and emotional development in the process, despite a nearly 0% risk from COVID itself. We're setting a dangerous precedent by ceding personal health decisions to our state. Maybe you agree with the mask mandate, and maybe you're indifferent to it, but I don't know how you will feel when a mandate is enacted that you feel is dangerous or hurtful, especially to your children. Let me tell you, every single day to watch your child suffer and you not being able to do anything about it, it's too long to wait for that election, that next election. In September, the Senate Majority Leader and Senate President issued a statement discouraging concerned parents like me, COVID deniers. Calling us COVID deniers, he said, and I quote, "That we are infecting public meetings, public discourse, and public life with anger, irrationality, and abuse. This type of rhetoric is anti-American and anti-democratic, and I call on every legislator to denounce this dangerous language, especially in light of the many recent releases from the CDC itself in regards to their findings and the many things that they were wrong about. Now is the time for action. I'm asking you, begging you, to use your collective and individual voices to demand mask choice for families. The General Assembly will vote on Governor Lamont's executive orders as a package of 11. We implore our state representatives to demand a public legislators to vote on the mask issue as a standalone order and not as a package deal." Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I've asked you nicely twice for no applause after public comment. I don't want to have to cut off public comment. We invite the public's participation, and I'm just asking for respect back. In terms of public comment, the board did not enact a mask policy. We are following state statute right now, as is our responsibility. The agenda item is COVID policies that the district has put forward, so I just ask that you keep your comments specific to the COVID policies that the district is putting forward. In terms of, you know, Mr. Cummings has said at past meetings that when it comes, if it comes down to our local municipalities, that he is not looking forward, well, I will let you speak just to confirm, at a past meeting, that not looking for the Fairfield Public Schools to institute a mask mandate.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you, Ms. Vitale. That's absolutely correct. The Fairfield Public Schools recognizes, our staff recognizes, the concerns that you have all brought forward, both tonight and in email and other communications, and our commitment is to do right by our kids. When this mandate goes away, if this mandate, when this mandate goes away across the state, we will follow the next direction, and if it's mass choice, then that's what we'll pursue.
Just one more thing, Mrs. Vitale. If we could, we have a lot of people that want to give public comment, and we want to hear you. So if the next person can be on deck when the, when the person goes, that would be much appreciated.
Michelle Drennan, 1250 South Pine Creek Road. To the board members who are on our side, we know who you are, and thank you. You spoke about the rules in the school, okay? I know for a fact, I'm very involved in the schools. Your rules that you speak of, they are not the same. Some of the districts can go and read to their children, and then my daughter can go to lacrosse, and she can say, "My mom came into school today and read a book." And my daughter will say, "Oh, my mom's not allowed to come into the elementary school and read a book." So I know you think that the rules are the same, but they're not. Really, what my biggest message to you is communication. There's a lot of schools in this elementary school, in this district, I mean. You gotta get on the same page, okay? I've sat on the district improvement plan. I'm trying to help, but the messaging across elementary schools, because that's all I know, is not the same. It's not fair. We talk about equity a lot in this room, right? That's not fair. Some kids are getting asked about vaccines. They can do certain things. They can be let back in the school if they have a vaccine, okay? You guys want to talk about equity? How is that fair? How is that fair? The rules are not the same, and they're not across the board. So you can say that, and if you can say that and sleep at night, good for you, but it's not. Being a mother is hard. Being a mother during COVID is unmanageable at this point. Tears, constant tears from these kids. It's COVID. It's the masks. Who can do what at different schools? It's not okay. And you say you're fighting, you say you're helping, and you say you're on the same page, but I really urge you to start in your own schools and take a better look.
Can I have the next commenter come forward?
Caitlin Dierna, 90 Cider Mill Lane. First of all, I just want to thank the majority of the board that is supporting our children, supporting their choice to remain unmasked if it becomes a local decision. Thank you. I'm a mother to a seven-year-old, six-year-old, and three-year-old, and I need so much to have your support for mask choice in Fairfield. We need masks to be optional at school, and we need your help. We know, now know that the legislator is going to vote on these 11 executive orders as one entity, and we are imploring our state representatives to have a public hearing, just as we're having tonight, and then to vote on the mask issue as a standalone order. I'm urging all of you to put together a joint letter to Lamont and our legislators asking for mask choice. Please push them to lift the restrictions and give the control back to local school boards. Besides masking, which is by far the biggest impediment to my children's social, emotional, and educational well-being, there are numerous COVID restrictions in Fairfield that are causing unnecessary damage at school. The current environment in schools, teaching my children and their classmates to fear germs, to fear being too close, to fear talking and singing, to fear touching a friend, among many detrimental things. My daughter, who was in first grade last year, came home hysterically crying because she thought she was in trouble for touching her friend's back at school while playing tag. That fear certainly doesn't come from our household and is clearly being manufactured at school, a school that is supposed to nurture and support my children. We're supposed to be protecting our children, but instead, we're projecting our fears and insecurities onto them. We should be arming our teachers, leaders, and principals with the facts and not just the salacious headlines that cause them panic and fear. They have had the opportunity to be vaxxed and boosted, and they can continue to wear well-fitting masks. They are very protected, and should feel confident. One way masking does work, and I can send you data on the efficacy. The cloth masks with unicorns that my children wear that have been washed 100 times are doing nothing to protect classmates and teachers, so my daughter doesn't have to be told 10 times a day to keep pulling up her cloth mask over and over. This fallacy of protection is actually detrimental to people with immunocompromised family members. For two years, the majority of our students have been wearing cloth and ill-fitted surgical masks just for show, and these facial decorations are causing our children serious harm. I'm sure you're well aware from the last budget meeting of the huge increase in speech and psych evaluations. These masks come with a high cost to our children. As adults and leaders, we need to stand up for our children and students when unscientific mitigation strategies such as mask and chew, silent lunches, silent snack, just to name a few of the strategies presented as viable options to our kids. We need to speak up and say this is just wrong. These are our children, and we need to do more for them. In closing, please help us make mask choice in schools a reality by joining together to submit that joint letter. And please make sure that we get rid of all the unnecessary mitigations.
Can I have, thank you for your comment. Can I have the next person who wants to give comment? And again, the COVID policy is not a mask policy. It does not say that children need to wear masks. We are following the state guidelines. And as Mr. Cummings said, when that changes, so will our policy. So I ask you just please to keep it to the agenda item. Thank you.
Hi. Meg Kelleher, 189 North Cedar Road. Slightly different topic. I would love for Ludlow to get a scoreboard. And that's all I'll say on that. That works. I should add that. And as far as the COVID policies go, it would be great if there are any further restrictions, which we all hope there aren't, but if there are, that that could be run by the board And I know people don't want opinions, so if it's okay, I'm just going to read from an expert opinion that was written by 14 doctors, now signed by over 200. It's an open call to restore normalcy for U.S. children. It's very short, I swear. In much of the United States, adults have the option of returning to life essentially as we knew it in 2019. However, children continue to experience disproportionate restrictions, and the costs are mounting. Youth depression, suicide, drug overdose deaths, and obesity have all risen dramatically during the pandemic. The unintended consequences of pandemic restrictions are now a greater risk to our children than COVID, and we must act on that reality. Meanwhile, children's already low risk from COVID has become even lower. Vaccines are available to children age five and up. The Omnicron variant is causing milder disease, and vaccines continue to be extremely protective against severe disease. Based on a careful review of all this evidence, we believe it is time to allow children the same return to normalcy that adults have enjoyed. Children's schools, athletics, and activities should be restored to their 2019 norms. Masks should become optional in U.S. schools, we suggest, by February 15th, and we can also return to pre-pandemic norms for quarantines. If you are sick, stay home. We can and should take care of the medically vulnerable children and adults using focused protection strategies that protect individuals with risk, as we did in the years before COVID, rather than prolonging harmful restrictions on all children. And I'll stop there, but it is signed by 200 doctors, so I think the tide is turning. People's opinions are changing. One last thing. Recent NBC poll, 65% of parents are now more concerned about their child missing out on education than getting COVID at school. So we appreciate your support. We appreciate all that you've done, and we hope that perhaps you can continue to advocate at the state level if we need. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment.
Hi. Kate Steiner, 1889 Mill Plain Road. Again, thank you for your tireless volunteering in this position, and I would just like to comment, when you keep saying CDC guidelines, right now, it should be if you're vaccinated, it's recommended to wear a mask. I have three children in the public schools. They are vaccinated, and yet they are required to wear a mask. I'm looking around the room now. All the adults here have the choice to wear a mask. It should be our children's choice as well.
Thank you. Anyone else? Before we go to our callers? Yeah. Okay.
Hi. Marie Rotundo. I'm one of the callers, so I thought I'd just come up.
Oh. Well, thank you.
I'm just going to make it really quick. So the experimental COVID precautions in schools, the protocols, the policies that we're discussing tonight, they've made our children suffer with, with everything from speech delays to daily headaches to suicide behavior, suicider, suicidal behavior, excuse me. If a Fairfield family needs special protection from the virus, they can send their child to school in any mask they choose without a mandate or outdated COVID policies in place. Now is the time to come together as neighbors and support each other's choice. And you, as our elected board members, should come together as one voice to support our choice, loud and clear to the governor. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name is Sally Connolly. I live at 682 Tunxus Hill Road in Fairfield. Clearly, you have all gotten numerous letters from me over the, emails over the last few weeks, so I'm not going to delve too much into that. I also just want to say I'm here really to support everyone who has spoken before and just to be present at the meeting, because I think that's important for us to be showing up. A couple of things I do want to reiterate that I heard is, having to do with COVID policies, are the inconsistencies across the schools. I think that is a major problem that needs to be explored. In line with that is also communication and how that communication is being carried out between the schools. I'll also bring up just the perspective from me as a Board of Health member. I know this is not an agenda item, so I won't get into it, but just the fact that I was told on numerous occasions at the Board of Health meetings that the speech-language pathology unmasking was occurring and was allowed to occur, and we know, in fact, based on what has occurred in a number of conversations the last few weeks, that indeed was not happening whatsoever. So I have some major concerns about how that communication is going, and will be, like I said in the email, bringing that up to a few different press sources tomorrow, because I think that should be revealed. Lastly, on another note, and positive note, I know that there is going to be a proposal for an addendum, possibly to the budget, for a full-time music coordinator tonight. I would like to point out that that is very important as a parent of four musicians, as a musician myself, and looking at how COVID has really decimated our music programs, which have been known as award-winning programs over the years. I think this is something that everyone should strongly consider. Really, somebody being in a .8 position and having a .2 position of teaching, certainly I know that our music coordinator is willing to go into a full-time position and that there would be opportunities to continue to be involved in the music department. I would say there's a lot of after-school programming that occurs, like the honors orchestras or honor band, and then also maybe doing some guest conducting. So like I said, I would like you to all strongly consider that. Many area districts do have full-time coordinators for music, and we really need to be making that a priority at something that would be only around a $17,000 increase. And certainly, we know how many emergency funds that we've received from keeping our kids masked over the last two years, so maybe we could take some of those millions, just a small shred, to actually invest back into our students for something like music. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Connolly. Anyone else in the audience?
Hello. Amy Brennan, 2392 North Benson Road. I don't have a speech prepared. I moved here with my husband and two daughters in the summer of 2019. The number one reason we moved here is for the highly-rated school district. The number one reason we moved here is for the highly-rated school district. And all I want to say especially to you, Mr. Cummings, just please, please speak for our children. There's nothing else that we can do, that we could just pray and pray and pray, but we need your help. We need your help. Our children need your help. Please help our babies.
Doing this right? Hi, my name's Tim Stewart, 998 Sasko Hill Road. On my topic tonight, again, thank you for all of your service in the Board of Education. Topic here, there are, at least the word went out to several hundred parents of student athletes at Ludlow, are concerned is let's get a football scoreboard that's functional and functional for all the different sports played at Ludlow. Ludlow is underserved in terms of its athletic facilities. I welcome any one of you to go to any of the competitors that Ludlow has in this area. We obviously have constraints in terms of space, but much more field space is needed. We need a functioning scoreboard. We need improved locker room facilities in the school. We have a weight room that's certainly inappropriate for the needs we have today in the high school. I've seen photographs of kids exercising in hallways. It's an underserved population at Ludlow, and Ward needs improvement as well, so I welcome you to review those issues, please, and do your best to bring Fairfield up to the standard that it actually deserves to be. Thanks.
Thank you for your comment. Anyone else in the audience before we go to our callers? Okay. Thank you.
Did Kelly Sadek speak live? No.
No.
Okay. Marco, do we have Kelly on the line, or should we go to Ms. Keys?
Kelly is not on the line.
Okay.
Ms. Keys, the floor is yours.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Great, thank you. Good evening. Abigail Key, 179 Fairview Avenue, Fairfield. I'm here about the budget and Math Academy. Please live up to the goals of the district as stated in the vision of the graduate. Fairfield Public Schools will ensure every student is engaged in a rigorous learning experience that recognizes and values the individual and challenges each student to achieve academic progress. When students start out knowing most of the curriculum, there's little room to achieve academic progress and no rigorous learning experience to engage in. Canceling Math Academy without a robust alternative math acceleration plan is basically saying only kids whose parents can afford outside math support or private schools deserve math at the level they're ready for. It's the antithesis of equity and the so-called mission of the district. If you are canceling Math Academy, you must include appropriate funding for homeschool-based resources for all the elementary schools to provide math education to these kids. Without it, the most socio-economically disadvantaged will be hurt the most. I stand by my earlier comments. Math Academy is the most cost-effective way of serving these kids, and if you choose another route, you must fund it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello, can you hear me?
We can.
Oh, great, thank you. This is Randy Cohen at 200 Boyd Drive, speaking about Math Academy. Thank you to the board for hearing our words. Thank you for the eloquent speech made on our behalf at the end of Tuesday's meeting. Needless to say, we could not agree more. We are disappointed that the board and educational team may choose to terminate this incredibly well-received and much-needed program. It has not caused harm to anyone, and it has helped so many. For example, at least two young boys of color were being seen as classroom disruptors rather than neglected advanced learners. One of them developed significant psychological difficulties as a result of this. Both of these boys of color are finally now educationally included and profoundly grateful and happy to be within this program. And that such a program would be canceled due to equity concerns rather than simply providing a means-tested bus is hard for us to understand. Regardless, we strongly urge that whatever alternate program is created will offer the three most important components of learning for any student: an appropriate curriculum, a teacher who understands the population of children he or she is teaching, and peers to learn with. As you know, some schools have only one or two identified students, so some movement of students between schools may still be necessary to at least offer if students are to have an ability to access other students who can work with them on problem-solving in math. Also, my understanding is that over the past two years, the cost of Math Academy has been approximately $100,000 yearly, since it has resulted in Dwight not needing one additional classroom for the second year in a row this year. It's likely that an alternate program to Math Academy would cost more, as the curriculum and teaching must be replicated at 11 schools instead of concentrated at one. We're aware that the education budget is stretched thin. Nonetheless, we believe, and we hope the board also believes, that providing every elementary school child with an appropriate education in math, a core learning area, is an essential mission of schools, which must be prioritized when difficult funding decisions are made. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Gallier, are you on the line? Amy Cook, the floor is yours, if you're on the line.
Hi, this is Amy Cook. Can you hear me?
We can. You have three minutes for your comment.
Okay. I'm at 178 Horseshoe Lane. Thank you very much for the Board of Ed's service. I'm a parent of a junior at Fairfield-Ludlow, and I wanted to comment that I'm in full support of the second-floor concession stand renovation project. I read in the Q&amp;A document that it was knocked down from a Priority One project to a Priority Two project because it's not deemed a safety issue or an indoor air quality issue. I disagree with that, as I recently saw photos of the current 90-square-foot weight room and was really just surprised to see how close the equipment is together, and someone can easily get hurt once you put a group of teenagers in there. And we all know about the air quality in athletic teenagers. It's my understanding that Fairfield Ward has a 4,000-square-foot facility of their own, so I think it's time the student athletes at Ludlow are on equal footing, and we should not be made to wait any longer. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Gallier, gonna give you one more. The floor is yours, if you can hear us and connect. Ms. Sadek? If you can hear us, the floor is yours.
Sorry for false statement, she just hung up.
Okay. All right, that is the end of our opening public comment. Just a reminder that we also take comment prior to all of our action items. However, if you give a comment on a subject, you can only give comments once. So moving on to approval to extend COVID-19 policy to February 15, 2022, can I have a motion? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Ms. Guernsey. Just to put it in some context, we were, the COVID-19 policies were due to expire at the end of the month. Some of those, we just, leadership discussed with the superintendent about letting them expire. Mr. Cummings, I don't know if you want to give any comments or stuff, don't want to speak to you, but we debated letting them expire at the end of the month, but there are a couple of policies, specifically the one about attendance, that we feel need to be revisited and updated before we let them expire. So we are asking the Policy Committee to review the attendance policy specifically next week, to see, take another look at these policies. And when I say policies, these aren't things that happen in the classroom. These are more of the Board of Ed policies in terms of attendance, visits to schools. Green policy is gone, but short look at those at the Policy Committee next week to bring forward any policies that need to be updated to move us forward. And then the hope is that after that, they will, most of them will not be needed. Is that a fair summation?
Yes, that is. As you said, the one policy that we're most concerned about is that attendance policy, harder, there we go. The attendance policy is our number-one concern, as it does entail the remote learning instruction for students in isolation or quarantine. And that really is part of state guidance this year around attendance, so we need a corresponding policy to support that. At least that's our thinking now, and we're gonna, we'd like to have Policy Committee weigh in and take some look at that.
So again, it's really just to make sure that our bases are covered for those children that are going to be potentially absent or in isolation. So with that, comments from the board. Mr. Asa?
So I think Mrs. Vitale just said most of what I was going to, but, you know, in discussion with Mr. Cummings about just letting this policy expire, the C-19 one covers multiple policies, and one of which was most concern for me was one that Mrs. Jacobson has really kind of brought to the forefront, and I appreciate it, was around the attendance. So for me, I look at this as an extension for two weeks, so Policy Committee next week can take this up and dive into the individual policies, and then in our February 15 meeting, bring back any like-the-attendance policy that I could see potentially supporting through the end of the year, so we don't have to keep doing this. But for me, that's why I'm supporting this two-week extension is really for that, and I do not, just to be clear, I do not foresee this extension causing any further mitigation, closing of schools, anything else like that. I just, I don't see it happening. I think, I appreciate all of the public that came out to speak tonight. I share some of the sentiments. I have elementary kids myself. But again, to me, in looking at this, I would like to charge Policy Committee to look and see which specific ones, like attendance, need to come back to us and potentially get approved for the end of the year, and that, to me, is what this two-week extension is.
Ms. Guernsey?
Hi, I'm sorry I didn't submit this question ahead of time, but this is a question for Mr. Cummings through the chair. It, you know, I think it's worth this extension only for the purpose of reviewing this clearly in policy, but what I'd like to know is, is it possible for you, for Mr. Cummings, to take a closer look at the visitor policy and these other areas where we're seeming to have an inconsistent application throughout the schools? That's something that's really important to me and to clearly to the people that have spoken tonight. So knowing that these policies were intended, they were passed in the spirit of sort of least restriction, is that something that we can look at over the next two weeks before we let these expire?
Yes, thank you, Ms. Guernsey, for asking that. Our current expectations around this, we had a conversation with several representatives from the PTAs on Tuesday. Our current expectations around visitors is that they should be in the buildings. So what they raised, and what's been raised again tonight, and that we've heard at different times, is the inconsistent application of this across the schools. When we become aware of it in central office, we have conversations with the principals when we hear about these inconsistencies. We heard examples the other day about snack, because there's a, somebody said it tonight, people are interpreting these to some degree to their own concerns or worries or understandings, and we've had to correct those misunderstandings. So when we become aware of it, we go back to the schools and make sure that people are, we have an expectation everybody's going to follow the same. This has been communicated, it'll be communicated again, and so yes, going forward, absolutely.
Thank you. Ms. Masconelli?
Thank you. First, just to be clear to the public and to the board, obviously, the Policy Committee has heard loud and clear the comments of the public. I do support this being extended, and it was most especially because I was not willing to add a policy special meeting in the midst of all of this budget work, and we needed to buy some time. It would have been, I think, a little bit much to ask of us as volunteers to add a sixth meeting to the month of January, because we've already had one policy meeting earlier. And I'm sorry, it didn't occur to us to put it on that agenda, but we did not. So, you know, this is really, our policy meeting is next Tuesday. Anybody's welcome, and the public is welcome to listen in on that meeting, to hear our discussion of this. And so, you know, piggybacking on the consistency issue, again, obviously, Mr. Cummings has heard that loud and clear, so, you know, thank you for commenting on that. You know, the other COVID policies really are not that, again, the school volunteers, we've heard they're supposed to be in. But otherwise, the COVID language in them involves things like parents are expected to call if a child has a positive case. There's the explicit stipulation on how a child can be marked present if they are remote learning. There is the expectation that if transportation is adversely affected, that district is expected to notify parents, notify our families. That in the students with life-threatening food allergies, there is the COVID language that if lunches, that lunch may be held in, for example, the gym, if that spacing is needed, and that cleaning must occur. For school volunteers and visitors, that they need to comply with the same rules as those in the building are. And so that's the nature of how controversial or not this language is. And the one aspect of 19.2 specifically that I think is important to be reiterated is that it indicates, and this is the reminder, and this is more of an education for the public, these policies are how the board directs staff. This is how the board lays down, this is what we have as an expectation. And a 19.2 expectation is that the administration will provide notice of any protocols to the public. Without that policy, protocols could happen, in theory, that don't get communicated. Now, I'm not saying communication has been perfect, but this is an expectation of the board, and I would want that expectation to be in place right through until we know what happens with the state legislature. And again, I'm pretty clear where I'm hoping that goes. There, I do have two final questions, actually, to Mr. Cummings. One, and I was hoping our high school representatives were going to be here, because it was my understanding that one change that was supposed to be coming in place, to the point of our high school public commenters, is that the sport fan, the issue of fans in, at our athletics is in the process of changing, and was that officially decided?
Yes, there was going to be, I don't know if the schools communicated, but we talked about it this week. It was supposed to take effect on Saturday, so depending on how Saturday goes, it may be pushed to Monday, although we have some conversation.
Oh, because of the snow?
Yeah, I'm sorry, yeah, the snow. So, but yes, the next, well, Friday night, there's games.
Can you, can you explain to the public what is changing?
Yeah, we went back to, I think, 50% occupancy at this point, and of course, because it's in school, it's still the masking. But it had been, we had, some of the school, and there's been trying to have consistent practices across all the FCX schools. Some of that's differentiated by sport, but that's where we are right now with the guidance.
Which I am delighted to hear. And the last thing I wanted to bring up, and I did not submit this ahead of time or put this to your attention through the chair to Mr. Cummings, but one thing, I would like to be optimistic that we are switching to mask optional, to mask choice. That is my fervent hope. But if that happens, I am hoping that staff can start planning now for a transition plan. And by transition plan, I mean, I mean, there is, we have so many, first of all, I don't think we need a transition plan to drop the mask. That's not going to be the problematic part. But what will be the problematic part will be the language our staff uses, both to be sensitive to any child who sensitive to any child who chooses to remain masked, to be, you know, in terms of how they speak about the closeness. And what if a child comes up to a teacher and says, "Yesterday, I couldn't, today, why can I do this?" Now, I'm not saying the conversation won't be happening at home, but I would like our staff essentially to have talking points, thoughtful talking points so that they can address those issues. And I think the planning for that really needs to happen now and to get a lot of, you know, some parent input in there. So, I just want to, you know, raise that now because I honestly think that could take a good three weeks. And again, hopeful for the 15th to be ready to roll with that.
Thank you. We have, well, I first want to say, I came out of Fairfield Lidl yesterday morning, walking out the door, I texted Mr. Papa George or emailed Mr. Papa George that we have to have ready the signage changes for the front doors, all the doors. But, yes, we are going to meet, the district leadership team meets on the first Thursday of every month, and that is on the agenda for next week to talk about how we're going to approach this. Because these issues of consistency that are concerning everybody are things we need to be proactive of and address with our staff. We know that there are, you know, when people get into this, there are people on every side that get comfortable or uncomfortable with the change. And we have to help people work through that change, but we have to hold them to the expectation. And in this case, the option.
Ms. Kelly.
I just have a quick question. I understand that this is extending until February 15. Just to, is that solely just to line up with, that's the only reason?
Just to be clear, to line up with our next meeting.
We have a meeting also. It just happened to work out that day.
That's what I wanted to make the distinction. It wasn't, we're waiting for, it just is a coincidence that it happens to also be on the 15th.
It's just a coincidence. That is our next regular meeting is the 15th, and just in terms of timing to put it towards policy.
Okay. And I just want to reiterate about the consistency issue. I know you say you address it when you hear about it, but I mean, I'd argue we don't need to look any further than this room where Nathan, and I apologize, I didn't write down your brother's name, but have been sitting in this room for the better part of an hour unmasked. And I'd argue that it's probably been maybe one of the best hours of their unmasked lives in a school setting. So, I don't think we have to look any further than this room to discuss that there are some serious consistency issues, so.
Any other comments from the Board? Ms. Maxicanelli, thank you for those suggestions and for just reiterating some of the talking points of the policies because I think that the public may not have been as well-versed in that, so I appreciate that. And just a reminder for even the Board, we passed these, you know, many months ago, so I appreciate that. And I will be supporting, obviously, just putting it forward because I do want the Policy Committee to take, you know, a look at this. I know that some of this might be covered already by state statute, but I think that having our own, you know, direction to staff is important. So, thank you. Before we vote, we'll take it to the public for any comment on the policy. And again, if you've already given, if you've already given comment to this agenda item, you will not be able to speak again, I'm sorry. But, if anybody new wants to speak, now is your opportunity. Okay. Seeing, oh, I'm, no, it's okay.
Hi, I'm Elise Tissot. Oh, God, I've never gone up here. 525 Hollydale Road. I have four children, two are second grader, kindergarten, almost three, and a one-year-old. I just want to make it clear that with some of the rules, there's an Addendum 11 which allows unmasking during speech. And my almost-three-year-old is currently getting tested for ECC. And when I brought it up to their attention, they told me, "No, there's no unmasking. We can maybe do a little peek. There's no unmasking." So, there is an Addendum 11 under the CT GOV. And I am a special ed teacher, and I know that they need to see the lips, they need to see the expressions, and it's useless. They can't get that. It's just, sorry. You know that the speech and the psych evals are going up, and we need to fix this. So, the masks need to be removed during these special times working with the person who's supposed to be helping them. Please.
Thank you for your comment. Ms. Sadik is on the line? No, okay. Any other members of the public like to speak to this before the Board votes?
I do have Ms. Sadik on the line. If you'd like me to.
Ms. Sadik, are you calling to speak to the COVID policy?
Yes, can, yes, I am.
Okay.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Hi, I'm Kenneth Sadik. I live at 74 College Park Drive. I have four children, a fourth grader, a second grader, a rising kindergartner, and a preschooler. I appreciate the need to extend the policies for two weeks to take a look with a fine-toothed comb. I'm wondering if teachers have been involved in looking at these policies and thinking and giving feedback on what is actually working and what is unnecessary at this point. I was a part of an elementary school teacher, and I know that sometimes things are in place with the best of intentions, but they're just not realistic when you're dealing with young children. So, I would just implore you to make sure that perhaps teachers' opinions are weighed before you extend anything beyond February 15. Because all of these little things that are in place that are impacting our kids, you know, the visitor policy, the birthday lunches that they're missing out on, the class parties, all these little things really matter to our children. And while, you know, for us, it's not a big deal, for them, you know, this is shaping their elementary years. And I know the mask decision right now is not in your hands, as we've clearly heard, but it doesn't stop you from advocating for local control and giving parents a choice to mask their children. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, seeing no other public comments, we'll take it to the Board for a vote. Oh, sorry.
I just wanted to make one final comment, just again, in the vein of educating the public, just to be clear that we're using policy two different ways here, and I think that might be the source of some of the confusion. Just to be clear that the vote we're taking tonight for COVID policies is very much the 30,000 mile, I mean, feed-up in terms of it's the big-picture COVID policies. This is not the day-to-day function of the schools, the running of the schools, the rules that are in the classroom. Those are not things that the Board has voted on when we talk about those COVID, like, maybe those should be called the protocols. We're voting on the policy. So, just to different, just so that people understand what it is that we are voting on right now.
Thank you, Ms. Maxicanelli. And just to parents that are in the audience and those parents that are listening, you've heard from the superintendent, the expectation is to, you know, visitors are allowed in the schools, that PTAs are allowed to meet in the schools. And if that is not happening, you should be reaching out to your building principal. And Mr. Cummings is going to be reaching out to them again to remind them that that is the intent that has been shared many times to this Board, that we want our schools to be as welcoming, as open as possible as they possibly can. The policies that the Board has set do not, as Ms. Maxicanelli said, do not dictate a lot of what may or may not be happening in various classrooms. But, we do want consistency. I appreciate the public's comments, Board members' comments. And with that, we'll take it to a vote. The Board of Education approve amending policy C-19-1 to change the effective date up to and including February 15, 2022. All in favor? Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxicanelli, Mr. Peterson, all opposed? Mr. Attelli, Ms. Jacobson, and Ms. Kelly. Motion carries 6-3. Thank you. Okay, moving on. Adoption of recommended budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year, that the Board of Education approve an operating budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year in the amount of, what am I, what number am I using here? I have the wrong one. Can I have a motion? Mrs. Maxicanelli, second. Mrs. Gerber. Mr. Cummings, I'll give the floor. I know that you have some updates.
I'm sorry, I'm also, I get into this, I'm going to ask Ms. Laborius to come up to the table. So, prior to tonight's meeting, the administrators met in central office, and we reviewed the superintendent's request. Based on our conversations with the Board on Tuesday evening, we've made some adjustments that we'd be happy to go through tonight with the Board in more detail if you wish, excuse me, but we've made an adjustment to the budget with, that in broad terms, real allocates funding from the ESER II and the ARP-ESER grants. We would reallocate some of the ideas out of that, some of the funding ideas out of those grants, just put money in from our, the superintendent's request. And we also made some additional cuts, we made, moved some additional cuts within the budget. We made some, excuse me, I should say, more accurate term would be adjustments. So, including things like increasing the excess cost back up to 73%. We reduced the HVAC technician request. We modified the textbook request. And we made an adjustment in the gasoline pricing. And we also made an adjustment, excuse me, one more, on projected enrollment. So, what we've put forward to the Board for your consideration is a budget reduction of $1,702,222 at this time. And again, if there's questions, the program director, excuse me, the executive directors here this evening to go through any of these questions if the Board so chooses.
Mrs. Maxicanelli.
So, do we have the wording for the motion? Because should we put that on the table and then have the discussion?
Well, I guess I can ask for a motion if somebody would like to accept the superintendent's. No one has made the motion as of yet to, for, we put the motion on the table for the budget. The amendment, the amendment.
Right, so, motion, I guess my.
All the line numbers are.
Oh, yeah, yes, 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 yes. Yes. I was waiting for someone to say that we, you know, want to make an amendment. Do I have, can I have a motion from the Board to accept the superintendent's recommendations? Mrs. Gerber, seconded by Mr. Asa. And now, it is on the floor for discussion. Well, we've got some information about healthcare that I thought you wanted to go over.
Right, I apologize. Ms. Laborius, we did get some healthcare information that we should update the Board on, and there's information at your seat. Ms. Laborius has copied memos from the state that we've received. It's the seal of the state comptroller on the top of one from Kevin Lumbo, and then the one behind that is Siegel. So, we did get this information yesterday that changed our, that updated our, what we had projected as a health insurance rate, so.
Correct, yes. Thank you, Mr. Cummings. Yes, Courtney Laborius, Executive Director of Finance and Business Services. We did receive the memo that is a part of your packet dated December 21st was the information that we used to develop the budget with a recommendation of a 6.5% increase for the health insurance. We subsequently received a letter yesterday, it's dated January 20th, but we did receive it yesterday stating that the projected rate, which often turns into the rate that we adopt in May for the premium increase, to be 8%. That's different from what we projected in the budget of 6.5%. And speaking with a lot of other districts, we were surprised at this, given that we had received the previous letter indicating that there was about $39 million, almost $40 million from the coronavirus relief funds that would be applied to give some premium relief. That translates into about 4%. Given their projected expenses of 5% for the prescription, 5.5% for medical, we would have assumed that we could come in even possibly lower than 6.5%. That would mean that their current trends are exceeding, the premiums are exceeding the expenses by 7% this year. That would bring them up to 12%, which if we're getting the 4% relief, that gets us back down to the 8%. I do believe that some districts will be speaking with the comptroller's office to express concern over this, you know, giving one message and then less than through a month later, giving another message. So, but it is, it is an impact to our budget that we'll have to address between now and May, if the Board so chooses. Ms. Asa.
So, first off, I would like to advocate that we are one of those districts screaming from the rooftops. Please be sure that we are joining in on that picket, if you'll call it. I read this, and every year, we get these numbers, and then somehow it winds up generally coming in under. I think they play very conservative with this. I personally feel that I would want to move forward with the numbers that we have projected because I think there should and will be enough backlash on this. And that money that is out there, I think we need to be talking to the comptroller and we need to be advocating at the legislative, anywhere we can. And I'm prepared to do that and help in that any way I can, you just have to tell me.
Thank you.
Well, luckily, we're meeting with our state delegation tomorrow morning, so we can, you know, share.
Just to be clear, that will be coming up.
Ms. Jacobson.
So, we're aware, what would the number actually be if we were to take care, if they were to come in online, just because I'd like to have a look at that.
Sure, it's, I can give you the exact estimate.
Just the variance?
404,238. You're welcome.
Thank you for that update. Mr. Asa.
Can we talk to this list of 1.7 that we put on the table?
We can. Any other questions before we move on to that, about the healthcare number? Okay, so, right now, the recommendation is just to leave the adjustments that were put forward yesterday, no change is being suggested based on this new information at this time.
That is correct.
Okay, thank you. All right, so, we will move on now to the superintendent's proposed adjustments to the budget for any questions and discussion. Mr. Asa.
So, first off, I want to thank Mr. Cummings, Mrs. Laborius, and the entire staff and everyone involved with coming up with this. I am very happy to see that we are utilizing some of this money that we would most likely have to reallocate anyways. So, I'm happy to be seeing it here. And I'm further happy that I don't really see major areas of cliffs. Mr. Peterson brought that up at the last meeting, which I have been adamant about all along. And to that point, I just wanted to see if I could ask you a couple of questions on some of these lines. So, to confirm, the DEI administrator role, what we as a Board, correct me if I'm wrong, are committing to is that 1/3, 1/3, 1/3 for these three years. So, that at the end of the three years, we will have built that position into the budget, therefore not having a cliff, correct?
That's what you're seeing reflected here is the first 1/3. And the savings that we've applied from the grant, which is currently funding the position, represents the next third next year, and then the final third in the following year, meaning that the anticipation would be that the position would be 100% funded by the Board after the third year.
Okay, thank you for that clarification because I will say, when I first saw that number, it jumped out at me, but that, getting that explanation makes sense. it jumped out at me, but that, getting that explanation makes sense. The other points here that I was happy to see was putting money on the Tomlinson chiller, which is, I would consider that air quality related, so I think that's an appropriate use of this funding. With regard to the textbooks, and not just specifically these textbooks, but one of the things that we talked about was by having these textbooks in here, in the budget, that when the next round of textbooks come up, that we will have had that in. So in taking 500-something thousand dollars out, you know, I guess my initial fear was, okay, when the next round of textbooks come up, English, right? How are we going to fill that hole? And I think I'm comfortable with what I believe you're going to say, and maybe I'm going to ask Mr. Cummings, is what is the plan, and is the plan to spread things out moving forward when we can over multiple years to flatten that?
That would be our goal. We have to, well, a couple of things. In a broader context, one of the things that Ms. Laborius is going to begin working on after we finish this budget, after we finish this month, is essentially starting to establish these five-year projections as we look at things like the curriculum renewal calendar and taking some estimates of what those textbooks would be. So that when we're thinking about the budget, as I said probably too many times, rather than try to deal with every budget year as an independent story, that we really think of it as chapters in the book, and that we approach it in such a way that we spread those types of funds out. So when you're looking at a large textbook purchase like math, or in a couple of years, ELA, how might we prioritize grade levels? What is the highest grade level? Should we be looking at, you know, and I'll, just as an example, are we looking at K2 as opposed to 6, 8? And then getting total costs of those things and looking to distribute them so that we don't, where we can avoid the ups and downs in certain accounts, try to build a more steady outlay of funds over the years.
Okay.
And I just want to, I would also say, trying to do that as well with technology.
Okay. And I appreciate that point. And just to be clear, you and your staff are confident that we can, we can start to do this work and start to take those proactive measures without it negatively impacting the students? Whereas, like this year, we're, have a new math curriculum coming in, but in this projection, we're saying that some of the books can be put off, correct? So, but in doing so, you don't feel that we're taking away or negatively impacting the children's education?
That's correct. We wouldn't have, we wouldn't have removed anything if we felt that that would, it would have a negative impact on, you know, the tech. If we thought textbooks were needed, the new courses we're prioritizing, for example. So if we felt that, that we were comfortable with the decisions.
Okay. My last thing is just to this community liaison support position. I see us moving that, you know, into here using grant money. And I just want to say for one, you know, as, as somebody that I believe understands the point and the end game here, there's not really any data to show that this is going to accomplish what you want to do. But that being said, I feel that this could be an appropriate use of the grant funds because it could get us to do what you intend and what the point of this is, which, which could directly be related to what this money is for. And at the end of next year, if this position has not lived up to the expectations, then it is something that, you know, can go away and will not really have an impact on next year's budget. That being said, if we do decide that this is good and we want to expand and keep it, then I would just say we take every means possible to do like we are with the DEI and spread those costs and build them in over time. So that would be my only point to that.
Mrs. Maxson-Kenelly.
Thank you. Two, a few questions. First, talking about student impact, with the money that's been reduced from or removed from, because I didn't have the original numbers with me, for the boost remote tutors, the boost program supplies, and the after-school supports, is it that we simply don't anticipate it costing as much? Or is this in fact now a deficit for the district in terms of the experience in trying to address learning loss, and now we'll have to be doing it through our current budget? So what is the impact of those three?
Those are reflections of what we're seeing as experience. So, for example, I'll just pull out, you know, we had money allocated for, well, one, as a first item, we are hoping to take away the remote tutoring option next summer and make it all in-person. So for example, so that's a money that we saw available. The supplies, oh, no, that's the supplies, excuse me. The, well, the program supplies, we did take everything that was bought for the program this summer. We boxed it up and we hid it away. So we don't foresee the need to purchase, we'll probably need to buy some things depending on enrollment, but we don't need to see that allocation of funds again. So we felt that those were monies that became available. One of the things that we are mindful of, and we talked about as we did this, is, as you know, in both of these grants, excuse me, there's an expectation that a certain percentage, 20%, be set aside for student learning loss. So we are looking at, we're being mindful of that as we're making these cuts and, or these adjustments. And some of the things that we kept in the grants, for example, a lot of the SEL work that Mr. Mankouzi is counting on to implement the program, as a result of the program review, that is also student supports as well. So we're continuing to keep in mind that 20%, and that is a target at minimum.
Okay. Thank you. And then regarding the middle school curriculum writing, was this for the implementation guide for the new schedule, or was this something separate?
This is, this is really an anticipation new schedule. We're looking to get, we feel that we've made good progress on this already during the course of the school year. So we felt that, a couple of things. One, we're going to be using more school time, after-school time, a lot of it's been in department work. We're also anticipating that, like we had this summer, or that we experienced this past summer, we're not anticipating a lot of staff availability, based on, for many of the same reasons that we experienced that last summer with the, the way staff are just, have been working so hard that we just don't think they're going to be that available this summer. So we thought, a lot of that money was put aside for summer work, and that you'll see that similar type of approach when we look at things like the data literacy training. Those are just things that we, in the optimism of last July, August, we were hoping to get more use out of this, the summertime. And at this point, at least for summer 2022, we're not so sure.
Thank you. And then my last one was concerning the capstone experiences. Because obviously, this class of 2023, it's here now. And in terms of the graduation requirements, how does this impact the formulation of those formatives, the summative, the, you know, that, that whole thing? How does this cut impact that?
Well, this is, I like to think that, I still think this is very important work, and I would expect that we'll be coming back to the board either to fund this in the general fund, or perhaps another grant relocation. But again, being the availability of people this summer we were concerned about, the capstone experience was really looking ahead to the senior internship type of idea and how we might approach that in a different way. So as you know, Ward now is implementing the senior internship. There's been some modifications in the Ludlow program. We're looking to build something that would be, that would have, I think, a broader reach that students could access perhaps in both their junior and senior years as an option, as well as during summers. But it, so that's going to take some planning. And it just, just like I said, and given the immediacy of the budget need right now, I still think this is important work, but we're just not ready for it yet.
So again, I just want to be, because obviously, we had a discussion in policy about graduation requirements and the concerns around that. This is, because the senior internship is not part.
No.
Of the graduation requirements, which I understand if this is just a big umbrella. So I want to make sure that that umbrella is not impacting our preparation for our students and for staff to be able with fidelity to pursue these graduation requirements and the capstone experiences.
That's correct. And I believe we still could, depending on individual student need, we still could develop individual capstone-type experiences for students. You know, there's a, the graduation, we're working on, we have the admin regulations, and they talk there about a capstone experience has been in the past. So I think we can, we can do that, but I think we're right now looking probably more at individual need that we can learn from, but we really have to approach this in a broader fashion.
Ms. Jacobson.
I just wanted to get an update on the senior laptops. I know that we had budgeted for over 700 of them and close to $500,000, so this is a big chunk of that. So I'm just wondering, did we not buy all of those for this year? Did we?
Dr. Parrish, come up. But the short answer is yes, we did not buy all of those.
You did not buy them.
Zakiya Parrish, Executive Director of Operations and Processes. So we met with the two head principals at each school, along with our Director of IT, in order to assess the quantity of devices needed at each school based on what we wrote into the grant in terms of why we were purchasing them. And so based on that discussion, along with them and their Directors of Pupil Services, it was decided to reduce the amount of devices based on the needs at the school. And so we didn't want to just buy just because, we want it to be responsible in that way. So we did only purchase 400 of the 700.
And that was based more on course necessity in terms of the higher ability of those specific laptops? Okay. So I just wanted to get clarity on that. So no problem. All right. Thank you.
I just wanted to add that the board expressed concerns about that in July when we presented, I'm sorry if it was August, when we presented initially the ARP funding, and we, on your consideration, when Dr. Parrish did go back and have those conversations. So that resulted in the reduction.
Ms. Kelly.
I just wanted to say thank you for, I don't know if this is, hopefully you didn't just throw this together last minute, because it's very detailed. Where I am, or did you? Well, then, good on you. That's all I'm going to say. This was the, Mike sent it today, I think. It was the, the grant.
Ms. Laborius downloaded it from the state.
Oh, okay. Okay. But still, okay. What I was looking more for though, and just because now, like when I look, it's kind of like what Ms. Maxson-Kenelly said as far as not having the original, like, so when I look, I'm just going to use the boost remote tutors, for example, and I see that we've taken, you know, we're going to take $21,000 away from that. But this was the schedule that I was looking at originally. And so I look at this and I say, okay, well, and I totally understand that things change. But we originally, if I'm reading this correctly, had $44,000 in there. Then we added another $37,000 in there to get us to 82. We've only spent 41, and now we're taking away another 21. Like, that's the story I was trying to be able to see better, if that makes sense. And so I'm not saying I disagree with these, but I just like, it would be helpful to know, like, well, at one point, we thought we didn't have enough, and now we're going to take some away. Like, I get that things change based on participation, but, and that's just the one example. Like, it would take me a while to try to reconcile the rest of.
So adjustments were made to the grant. The initial application were estimates of what we thought the need would be. So of course, once those accounts are set up, we then have to go and submit a revision on, based on what actually was. So there was, last summer, a significantly larger number of students that requested the, whose parents requested the remote option for various reasons in comparison to the in-person option. So when the program was complete, we started the school year, we did an analysis of the actual expenses, we did submit a revision to the state, which was approved, which resulted in some reallocation of funds in different buckets based on the program. So we looked at what was spent in each area for the first summer, and then we doubled that in order to determine what the budget was going to be for this upcoming summer. Again, for the remote tutoring, under the assumption that we would move forward with it. Not knowing what this year would be like, luckily, we've been able to be full in with no problem. We don't foresee a need to have a remote tutoring option at all. So those funds, when the reallocation is submitted, there won't be a remote option. Those funds will actually go towards supporting more in-person teachers. So there'll be another revision where the remote boost part, or the remote boost line item will actually go to zero, and those funds will be moved over to the in-person line in order to support additional staff.
Okay.
Also, I'll just add that it is a little confusing, because the, this is a download from the state, as Mr. Cummings stated. On the side, you can see our crosswalk for our chart of accounts. We hope, you know, to go through in detail in the February meeting when we're looking more closely at ARP-ESER, you know, the history of the decisions and where we are today with, including the decisions that we made today, which in the changing environment had, had changed, you know, over time.
And so, and I apologize if this isn't the time to ask, but when we do get, I'm assuming we'll be, still be following this format of, in February? I just, I actually really like this format, and I was just wondering if we cannot lose the history when we do it? If we can date each, like, call, like, this was adjusted this way? And then unfortunately, we might have to go to landscape? I don't know how you want to do it, but just that way we can just see the trajectory of, I just like having the history of where these accounts started, why they moved. I just feel like it tells a story.
That's good feedback, yeah. Yeah, we could certainly adapt that, one that you're familiar with, to have that history in the notes as well.
Any other questions on the adjustments? Ms. Curnsey.
Just a quick one about the textbooks, specifically the delay of the precalculus textbook. I was just wondering if someone could speak to how that was sort of the lowest priority? Was it, did it have to do with it being largest cost avoidance, or was there a specific programmatic reason for that?
James Evedjancik, Executive Director of Instruction, Curriculum, and Assessment. The precalculus, there's currently a physical textbook and online licenses that can be used for the following year. So that's how we made the decision, so that it doesn't affect the students within those classes. There is a new textbook, essentially, that came through the review, but there's similarities, so we would be putting it off for that.
Any other questions on the adjustments? Okay. We will take it to a vote to, what? Public like to give comment to motion to adjust the amendment to the. Okay. Seeing the members of the public, all in favor? Mr. Telly, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Curnsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Ms. Maxson-Kenelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. Okay? Motion carries, 9-0. Now we are back to the main motion as amended. Ms. Curnsey.
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion. Should I read the amendment now?
Yep.
And I have a page number for reference. It's 137, and it's line 1,112, music K through 12, if that's helpful. It's an amendment to add $17,155 to the 2020-2023 superintendent's proposed budget to increase the music coordinator position to a full-time position at 1 FTE.
Can I have a second? Mr. Peterson? Ms. Curnsey? The floor is yours. Just to make your case?
Sure. So as you know, our music program has suffered tremendously during this pandemic. Restrictions regarding distancing and other mitigation strategies have negatively impacted our music classrooms across all levels. Reduced access to in-person instruction and performance opportunities have challenged our music curriculum. Earlier this fall, before we received the state's delayed revisions to Addendum 7, it was reported that 66% of our elementary students were not singing in their general music classrooms because they couldn't maintain proper distancing. I'll repeat that. Students were not singing in their music classrooms. Larger. Larger ensembles had to move to alternative spaces with poor acoustics, making it difficult or impossible for the more advanced groups to harmonize. As recently as last week, large group ensembles and performances were suspended at our elementary schools. Our music coordinator and teachers have worked tirelessly to provide creative alternatives to live performances and virtual lessons, and to advocate for changes that would allow our students to resume more traditional music experiences that are critical to the success of our music program. The music program has been a source of pride for our town. Our community has been recognized nationally for our commitment to music, and our music students have been awarded placements at all levels of regional, state, and national competitions. Unfortunately, throughout this pandemic, we've seen a consistent decline in student enrollment at the high school level. The overall change in enrollment from 2021 to 2022 was significant at this level. A 23% decline for band, 14% for orchestra, and 31% for choir. In order to preserve this program, I believe we need to support the music coordinator as a full-time position. This change was needed prior to the pandemic, and the needs are even greater now. A full-time position would provide additional flexibility to be responsive to the changing needs to our mus, of our music teachers and students. It might also allow for increased opportunities to give feedback and support to our music staff. I hope you will consider supporting this addition that will help us build back our award-winning music program. Thank you.
Mr. Peterson?
Hi, thank you. I just, I want to say in general, I support this amendment. This is something, actually, I think I brought up with Superintendent Cummings pre-pandemic from a long time ago. I do have some practical questions that I, I don't know if we have ready answers to, but since we're moving the position from a .8 to a .2, we're assuming that the current music coordinator will step into that position? Is that person willing to do it? Is Mr. Hughes willing to do it?
That I don't know.
In general, the person who currently occupies this role also currently has a teaching role. How are we preparing to cover the classes that are covered by the current .8 music coordinator?
The .2 that he teaches?
Correct.
Yeah. The, well, in the past, and it depends somewhat, well, it always depends on the person's specialty there. But what we would do, there's a couple options. One, when the enrollment essentially settles out in the spring, you know, the elementary enrollment is, the FTE at the schools is driven by the number of class sections, for example. And then the middle school and high school enrollment always determines that FTE. We would see if there was part-time positions that resulted from that. We could add a .2 to that, to that position. We could essentially recruit for just a .2 position. That can be challenging at times to fill, but depending on the, depending on the placement, you know, it's not impossible. You find people who are retirees. It would certainly fit within that salary limitation. You might find a person who's home with their children who might want to come back. So it's not an impossible thing to fill. Or the other option is, let's say it was at the high school or middle school, you could also look at giving somebody an overage. So somebody who's already teaching five classes, you give them a sixth class.
So I guess I just, I want to make clear that because currently the position is both the administrator and a teaching split, that is it possible that the ultimate cost of this amendment will be larger than the 17.5 that's being proposed?
And I, it's not an administrator, though. It's not an administrative position.
No, I understand.
Or not, I know you, Mr. Peterson, I know you've got it, but just to be clear. Yes, it's possible that, let's say it was an overage, and it went to a more senior teacher, it would be a fifth of their salary would be added to that. So yes, it could exceed that.
So I guess, in, given, given that circumstance, would you recommend, would it be prudent in the case of this amendment to bump up the number? Or do you think that, that extra .2 that we might have to find, we would be able to find elsewhere in the budget?
Would, I don't know. Oh, do you mean above the 17? Yeah, I think we could find that within the budget.
Okay. Again, I guess my, my primary objection, you know, my primary concern is I don't want this turned into a 1.2. It's, just to be very clear on that point, and I wanted to get that out, out in public. But otherwise, again, I'm very much in favor of this position. I think the music program is the jewel in the crown here in, here in town. It's a fantastic program. It's done wonders for my three children and hundreds of other children throughout the district and through, for years and years. And whatever we can do to support this program is well worth the investment.
Mr. Asa?
I guess to the chair, to Ms. Guernsey, or possibly Ms. Laborius, can you just expand on, on where this, how you calculated this number, and does it include fringe? Is it a true number? Or will there be additional expenses in the benefits line because of this?
So this individual position is already receiving benefits. An addition of a .2 would not impact that unless someone was going from a point, you know, position to, up to what equals a full-time or equivalent of getting benefits. So we don't anticipate that. As Mr. Cummings answered earlier, we would likely be either adding a course overload to someone or, you know, finding someone that wanted to work the part-time where this position to be funded. And so that's the value of the current role.
But to be clear, we budget for payroll taxes and everything like that. So how, how is there no implication?
So it should be a net, because if you're backfilling, like, right, you're right, that we didn't include the FICA. That's true. Yeah.
And that's my point, that I think it's very important that this amendment be accurately reflecting the total number, especially when we've seen in years past where budgets come down to the line and things are frozen. And I know this is a very small amount of money, and I'm being a little bit of a stickler here, but I just, I think it's very important for us to identify the exact dollar amount that equates to this position. And to Mr. Peterson's point, look, I, I see the value in this. I see the value in this. What I'm, I guess, questioning, if you want to call it, is looking at the history and knowing that, you know, people that have been in this role haven't just been, you know, leaving because they, they don't like their job or anything like that. But there's been some turnover. And what, what, you know, whether that turnover is, you know, explainable? What happens if we make this a 1.0 and, you know, moving forward, I guess, is my question?
I'm not sure I totally understand the question, but the idea of making this a full-time position is that it will make that position more attractive to any candidates. It's my understanding that even through the last process, that that was an issue. I mean, I, so it's, in terms of looking at arts professionals, that's, that's the kind of positions they're looking for.
Okay. And just to elaborate on that, because I honestly don't, don't know the answers to this because I'm not a music person, you know? But we've been told in many different categories that some of these coordinators actually enjoy having the teaching aspect, and that there's a benefit to having both. So from your experience, because you're very well-versed in this, Ms. Guernsey, through the chair to Ms. Guernsey, what would you say to the idea that somebody, let's say a future candidate, wouldn't want to be in that .8 for that role and .2 for the classroom?
Yeah. I would say that that's unlikely, because again, the expectation for a role like this in general is that it would be a full-time position, and there are always other opportunities for these coordinators to be involved still in, in teaching. You know, they could do something like the honors band after school or something that would be smaller, not teach an entire class, or they might be working with students outside of school just privately. I mean, there are a lot of different avenues they could pursue, but this is, this is really a full-time job that, that generally people are looking to commit to in that way.
Ms. Max and Canelli?
Just through the chair to Mr. Cummings. Obviously, we've heard of multiple requests for staff expansion. The athletic directors had come before us seeking to expand a position. The requests had been in the past for a communication director expansion. Some of those came forward, and this didn't. And I was wondering if you could speak, again, I absolutely appreciate the excellence of our music program. I'm not finding fault with that at all. But in fact, this wasn't something that came forward in this budget. And I was wondering if you could speak to that, if it's something you would be looking to at a future date? But ultimately, why isn't this something that we have done in the past from your experience and was not in this budget?
Well, last year, if you probably recall, that we did ask for some additional FTE for some of our other curriculum liaison, teacher leader positions, essentially. We felt that there was an inequity issue that, for example, in film and consumer science, there was no ability for her to be able to get into the middle schools and even get into the other high school. So we did address this last year with some of our other departments. We were mindful this year, well, like, I can pretty much answer any question you ask me tonight. We were mindful of the overall impact of this budget to begin with. So that was certainly part of it. I think the other, but going back to what I was saying earlier, as an equity issue, as we think about it among our curriculum liaisons, the World Language Curriculum Liaison, for example, has been less than, you know, she continues to teach, but that is another position that has instruction, teachers across all three levels. And we could probably make a similar case for, for her position to go full-time. So I think it's just a matter of thinking about these in almost a suite of improvements, if that makes sense, or thinking about people in similar positions and bringing them all forward at once, rather than kind of picking one or the other. Because, you know, just, just as a general approach.
So just as a quick follow-up of that, I, because I'm interested in hearing more about that, and with what, however this vote goes, I'm hoping that's something that maybe the Finance Committee can take up, is, you know, is an examination of what are our supports? And where might that be appropriate, so that that whole suite ideas is something that could, I mean, you know, if you've got nothing else to do, Mr. Peterson, on your agenda, but, you know, that maybe this spring, that's something that could be looked at for consideration next year?
We'll say, in general, you know, I think we all very much support the idea of teacher leadership, and we want to expand teacher leadership. The board has been very supportive of that. Even, you know, this year, you've, you've accepted the 10 and a half months for the SRB headquarters at the middle school, but going back, the creation of the department liaisons at the high school. It's, it's really essential to connecting teachers, the teacher administrator and the school to central office roles. And so the board has been very supportive of that. And in general, I think it's a very good strategy, not only to build capacity across the district, but to also build a pipeline of future leadership. Whether they remain, people choose to remain as teachers or move into administration, it's, it's the right way to build within, from within.
Any other questions?
I just had a follow-up. Back in September, when we were talking about music enrollment, I, you know, Ms. Guernsey and Mr. Peterson both, you know, raised concerns with me. At that time, I asked Mr. Cummings to, you know, just for an enrollment overview of the music department, and asked to get a read on what was happening in the elementary school classrooms. And I thought at that time, the feedback was that the majority of classes were singing, and it was actually opposite. 60% were able to sing in elementary school, and 40 were not because of space challenges in the buildings. And at that point, the principals were tasked with seeing if they could reallocate rooms to accommodate that prior to the update to Addendum VII. And we, after that, enrollment projections, I know that the superintendent wrote to the Department of Health, you know, advocating for the update to Addendum VII and sharing the updated guidance that Ms. Guernsey and the music department had shared with us. Am I missing, I'm just, you're, I don't understand, I'm just, my memory.
The statistics, I think, are less important than the fact that we would have a large percentage of students at the elementary school not singing during a music class in their classroom was the point that I was trying to hit. And the specific percentage is probably not as relevant to that.
It just hit me because I thought that I was actually flipped, and I thought that I...
I could double-check that, but...
I'm really torn on this. You know, music, I've said it before at the table, it has been a gift to my family, both of my girls, my son, all three of my children. I actually like the fact that the music coordinator is in the classroom with students and the relationship that my students have actually, my girls have had my students, my girls, and, and boy, I have had with past music coordinators. I am not sure I support it. Actually, I don't think I support it this time around, but I would be looking for it in, in the future. I think that Ms. Max and Canelli's suggestion of looking at all these positions is a good one. And I say that because we do have a award-winning music program. I think without a doubt, COVID and restrictions has definitely affected it and enrollment. And I'm hoping that, that we're going to see a change in the next year, that more students are going to be enrolled. I also, you know, we've, we built such a wonderful program with not having this a full-time position. So I, I wouldn't want to necessarily lose that student administrator connection, teacher connection. Go for it.
I was just going to add that in terms of being in the classroom, if this position were full-time, it would give more opportunities to be in more classrooms, so.
Thank you, Ms. Guernsey. Any other questions? Okay, we will take it to the public for a vote on the amendment. Okay, seeing none, we will take it to the board for a vote. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mr. Cummings, I'm, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. All opposed? Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, and Mrs. Max and Canelli. So where were we? Motion, motion carries 5-4. Congratulations, Ms. Guernsey.
Can, can I just, to the chair?
Yes.
Before I add this in to the total, Ms. Laborius, do we need, do you need to, since we just passed the motion for a number that might be wrong?
Yeah, I do think that that's an okay estimate, but I can, I can give you an example why. So we typically budget a new teacher at 77. This year, it's, I apologize, I'm going to get the exact number.
I'm okay if you're, if you're okay with it.
Yeah, yeah, because the, the number we gave was just slightly overstated, just because it's unpredictable as to whether or not we'd get a, a new teacher at that, you know, 20% of a new teacher rate versus higher rate. So even figuring in the FICA, yeah, okay, great.
Did, and, Mr. Papa George, did you, do we have the motion right now? Oh, sorry. You want to give it to me? Going to make a motion to add the scoreboard for Ludlow. So I'm just getting it from them. The motion is to increase maintenance services, object 313, line item 41, in the Board of Education 2022-2023 budget by $140,000 for a turf field multi-game scoreboard replacement at Fairfield-Ludlow High School. I know that's, I have it written out here just for you.
Can I have a second to that? Mrs. Gerber?
I don't know if I need to really justify this, but we all know that it hasn't been working for many, many years. We're hopeful to have a solution for the spring, fingers crossed, that is actively going on, but we need a permanent replacement to this, to this item. So that's the, the motion, and I hope everyone will support it.
Any other comments on this motion?
Seeing none, we will take it to the public for comment on this amendment. Seeing none, back to the Board. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, and Ms. Kelly. Motion carries 9-0. Moving on, are there any other amendments to the budget? Mrs. Maxon Cannelly.
I'm going to ask for a little latitude on this. I had, in terms of my not immediately saying a motion, but I had spoken at the last meeting regarding my intention to bring something forward regarding Math Academy. And of course, it just, I'll admit, it stuck with me that to hear our music program referenced as the jewel, the crown, it's awarding excellence, supporting excellence, and we have excellence in our hand that we are rejecting. And it just, it's, it's just a point of wanting to be consistent with what we appreciate, that what is a jewel to one is completely unappreciated, unutilized, and a non-factor for someone else. And they're asking for their shot at excellence and we are getting rid of it. Our Math Academy is a model of excellence with a basically perfect, perfect record of complete parent, student buy-in, full investment, and outstanding support. And so I had pulled together eight different ideas to share with Mr. Cummings to get his input, to get financial information on in order to present to the Board. And so I had, you know, fully invested in that possibility because I believe in fighting for excellence for all of our kids, and that includes these children. So I spoke with Mr. Cummings this morning. And by the way, anyone in the public who's interested in those eight ideas, feel free to email me and I'll share them out because I'm interested in hearing if there are any others. But I did speak with Mr. Cummings this morning on the viability of what I wanted to move forward with, as is my want. I get very excited at my ideas. But I know that, you know, more time is invested on this. We, as a Board, are a little bit disappointed. And I do sincerely believe that that is nine people, a unanimous disappointment with not having something at this moment. That said, in my conversation with Mr. Cummings, I received some assurances, but if I may, before I say anything else, if I could defer to Mr. Cummings to speak to our conversation and whatever else he'd like to add.
Thank you, Ms. Maxon Cannelly. Mr. Cummings?
Certainly. Thank you, Ms. Maxon Cannelly. Yes, Ms. Maxon Cannelly and I spoke this morning. And, you know, first of all, before I go any further, I just want to thank the parents and particularly the students who've come out over the past month, six weeks or so, to talk about their experiences in Math Academy as well as share their experiences in their former classrooms. You know, after each of our meetings, Dr. Zavichanik, Mr. Wakeman, and I have talked about this. And it raises a number of our concerns, not just for those students, but the level of instructional work that we have to continue to do in our, in our classrooms, particularly in, particularly as we're talking about this, this area of math. So I just want to thank them because I know that's not easy, particularly for the kids. It seems to be somewhat easier for some of the parents. But we really appreciate the comments. And again, the students, I think, distinguish themselves in their comments. The, so as Ms. Maxon Cannelly and I spoke this morning, I did say to her that, that we can continue to look at the ideas. I'm, at this point, recognizing the needs of the accelerated students. There are a couple of things that we will continue to look at. I am looking to do something that would have absolutely no impact on the adopted budget or the Board of Education. I just want to be really clear about that piece. But if we can find a no-cost option to at least address some of those student concerns, we will do so. We will continue to pursue, excuse me, possible answers for this. And my hope would be that we would have an update later in the spring, probably closer to the end of the year, just knowing the other things that have to be accommodated for or accounted for before we're able to make those choices. So we're not giving up on this concern that's been raised around the needs of the accelerated students in math.
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Thank you. And so, and I do want to reiterate for the purpose of the Board and the public that the, the word Mr. Cummings and I used repeatedly was acceleration, not merely challenge, but acceleration, that, that, you know, looking to replicate that aspect of Math Academy. You know, we've known all along that the immersion probably wasn't going to happen, but to find that other path. And so by virtue of that conversation with Mr. Cummings, I will not be making a motion at this time. And I do believe more thought needs to be put into it. I don't believe I would have the support of the Board. And so it just, I've obviously put Mr. Cummings on notice that I will be following up on this, you know, regularly and, you know, anything that in, needs Board input or, you know, thinking around that I sincerely hope, again, to the Chair, that if it needs to be a further discussion item at some point, that we have something ready for the 2022-23 school year, that we, as a Board, have that discussion when needed and offer our thoughts and most importantly, I hope ultimately, offer our support.
Thank you, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, and thank you for the work that you did putting forth the proposals and having the conversation with Mr. Cummings. I think that you do capture the Board's feelings about wanting to provide a more robust program of acceleration for these students in all of our elementary school. So when Mr. Cummings, as the work moves forward, we will make time on the agenda to have that discussion. Any other amendments to the budget? Okay, any other discussion? Okay, I'm going to ask the Board just for your consent just to take a five-minute recess before we vote. Any objection? Thank you. I need to refill my water. Okay, seeing, any more comments on the budget? Okay. So the number now is 202-491-554. Before taking it to the vote, for a vote, we'll bring it to the public. Any members of the public like to give comment? I invite you to come forward now. Seeing none, we're going to move on. That the Board, that... Ms. Teresa? All right, so the, right now, the total is that, 202-491-554, which is a 5.42% increase. Recommend a motion, the Board of Education approve an operating budget for the 2022-2023 fiscal year in the amount of 202-491-554 as presented to be forwarded to the town of Fairfield. All in favor? Ms. Rotelli, Ms. Jacobson, Ms. Guernsey, Mrs. Gerber, Mrs. Vitale, Mr. Asa, Mrs. Maxon Cannelly, Mr. Peterson, Ms. Kelly. Motion carries 9-0. Thank you to the Board. Thank you to the Board for your, all your hard work in reviewing this budget. Thank you to the Superintendent, to Ms. Laborius, to all the executive directors, to really the entire school district and all the staff that had a, had a hand in building this. Look forward to advocating for our school district, for our children, for our teachers as we move this district forward and this budget moves forward through other town bodies. And with that, we will move on. Approval of minutes, the Board of Education approve the January 11, 2022 special and regular meaning minutes. Mr. Peterson, second by Mr. Asa. All in favor? Ms. Kelly, you voting for the minutes? Motion carries 9-0. Moving on, Mr. Cummings, Superintendent's report?
Thank you. So yes, the Superintendent's report tonight, it's the single item and it's the update, excuse me, I'm switching gears, on the racial imbalance report. As we discussed back in November at a Board meeting, we attended, Dr. Paris, Ms. Vitale, Mr. Asa, myself attended the committee meeting of the State Board of Education on November 4th. And at that time, they requested that we send back to them by the end of January, a timeline to address the racial imbalance issues confronting the district in McKinley Elementary. So I put together the, the information that I'm sharing with you this evening. This, again, is a timeline, a proposed draft timeline of how the Board might go forward to address these issues. Being mindful of the facility discussion the Board is also beginning to engage in, I tried to wrap together the timeline with something that, that the Board might also pursue as they face those facility issues and potential other issues around enrollment and long-term planning for the district. So I think that's about it. We are due back to the State Board of Education in early May, the first week, first Wednesday of May, to answer questions they have about the timeline and our progress forward. So with that said, if there's questions?
Mrs. Maxon Cannelly?
Thank you. A few things. For February 14th, it says, meet with who? Who's doing the meeting?
I'm sorry, I should have included that. I was, we were thinking of Board leadership.
Okay. And then on the back, where it says for May 15th, develop the charge timeline and action plan for the committee, is that in reference to the new facilities standing committee?
Yes.
Okay.
I left, I deliberately left that rather vague, Ms. Maxon Cannelly, because I under, you know, the, the Board may decide to either take this on themselves, they may put an ad-hoc committee, so I didn't title it because I assumed that the Board would make that decision.
No, I agree with that because I, I wasn't looking to wordsmith this. I just wanted to make sure that that is the committee it was referenced because then obviously there are multiple more references to it, so I wanted to be sure. And then on the December 2022 through February 2023, there's reference to an ad-hoc committee. So then I wasn't sure if that was something different or if it was the same.
That should have been struck.
Okay. And I guess the, the only other question I had is what do, and I'm not saying not to include it, but what do we hope to gain by inviting the State Department of Ed down for the tour?
When we did that, I'm sorry, I'm blanking on the year, 2017, maybe? Dr. Jones was here. It was her first year. When we had the State Board come down at that time, the, the general reaction, there was a great benefit that we heard from them in seeing the, the school, having an appreciation for the fact that it is the community itself, the, to see the students together, to see the culture and environment that's been created at that school over many, many years by the hands of many, many people, parents, staff, and of course, the kids. And so that, I think it was, the intent then and the intent now would be to put faces to the issue. You know, I would say that, just my own personal impression from meeting with the committee in November was they, they're approaching this as the technical problem it is, but in so doing, they're losing sight of the students that are involved. Now, I think that they are conscious of that and they're very mindful in their intentions of that, but it's really important to walk in the halls. And so that would be, you know, I know members of the State Board have changed since then, membership in the Board and membership in district leadership has changed since then. There's a new principle. It would be important for us to at least invite them to see what the school is and is all about.
Thank you. And then just one last question. In terms of meeting with the Town Plan and Zoning Committee, how do we arrange for such an invite? And also, well, I don't know how much bang for the buck we're going to get. I think we're going to get a lot of state blame out of that. But that said, I'm not interested in leaving a stone unturned, you know, in, in terms of this whole process, but how do we arrange for something like that?
Ms. Teresa?
So I just wanted to touch on that because it, this is something that came up in the last meeting with the State Board Committee that we went to see. And we, we raised the, the point, which has been reiterated over and over again, that we are being tasked to solve a town-wide problem, not a Board of Ed problem. And some of the committee members tried to keep saying, well, what are you doing to solve that problem? And we said, well, this, again, is, is not for our charge to solve unless we do, you know, drastic redistricting and everything like that. So the, the line of thought was, and the conversation went to, well, having a more, or a better dialogue and at least an initial meeting with TP and Z and our Board to discuss and understand exactly, are there any plans to address the diversity throughout town of all sections? And specifically talking, you know, we, we raised the concern of 830G, you know, not necessarily always providing what the intent may be. And I think really it's to kind of prove our point to a bit, that, to the state. And it's, it's a, it's a first step that certain people on this Board have been saying for a while, that we need to have more communications with other town boards, commissions, and bodies, TP and Z being one of them. Can I say for certain what will come out of it? No. But I'm, I'm hopeful that they can at least hear us as a Board and make sure they thoroughly understand what we're being tasked to do because of a town housing problem.
Thank you. And then just, I would just have one caution. Generally, their nights, their meetings coincide with ours, so that'll be something we have to plan early to find a date where that's not the case.
Any other questions? Ms. Jacobson?
So, thank you, Mr. Cummings. I assume that you wrote this timeline. I just want to make sure that when we go to the State Board of Education or when you go to the State Board of Education, that they don't believe that this is an amendment to our plan, that it's just coming from the Superintendent, a projected item, because I just wouldn't want them to feel that we had taken action on that. Okay, thank you so much.
No, and that's really, they just wanted a timeline to just to see that we were moving our current plan forward. So that's what's before you today. And Ms. Jacobson, I think that we will also just share, talk about this with the delegation tomorrow also, some of our concerns. Okay, any other updates, Mr. Cummings?
Excuse me, I don't have any other updates at this time. I just want to echo the thank yous to our administrators and the, everybody who contributed to the budget and the conversations we've had with individuals over the past few weeks. It's been very helpful.
I'm really sorry, you guys, I forgot to make my second point. I was hoping that Digna would be involved in, in some of the previous part of that, so I don't know if we can put a amendment, just, I'd like to see her involved. I met with her and I just feel like she would be really great asset to this process, the racial imbalance thing. So I'm hoping that's part of your plan, but if it needed to be reiterated, in her input or insight into, into some of this work.
Absolutely, Ms. Jacobson. I didn't cite her out by name or role, but that, by, that February 14th... I didn't cite her out by name or role, but that, by, that February 14th meeting is certainly the start of that.
Mrs. Vitale? Just as a very brief piggyback on that, but perhaps citing by name, or more importantly, by title, finding someplace to insert it. It's a small point, but I think that as part of Fairfield's commitment, it'd be good that it's right there in the timeline. I think it's a great idea.
Anything else? Mr. Cummings?
No, I'm sorry, nothing else.
Okay. And Ms. Laborius, congratulations, your first budget with Fairfield!
With many more to come.
Bravo! With, when, you know, step one. You survived us. Okay, moving on, committee liaison reports. Ms. Jacobson?
I'm meeting with the state delegation tomorrow. I've heard from some board members, some ideas to share with them. Certainly, there's time still this evening if you have anything, but, you know, and I'll be happy to report back on anything that gets covered. And yeah, that's it.
Any other committee reports? Ms. Maxon Cannelly?
I'm not sure if the board is aware, but next Tuesday, we will be reviewing our COVID policies and probably looking on February 15th, if anything is to come forward, probably looking for a one-and-done, because it would need to, you know, to take place. So if the full board has anything that they would like the policy members to consider prior to next Tuesday, I'd really appreciate getting that information. I can have that feedback, you know, via email, printed off, available for all committee members, but I just think it'd be great to have that be as part of our discussion Tuesday, so that on the 15th, it's a little bit smoother. So that's just my request.
Mr. Cummings, does something else?
Yes, and I apologize if I forgot something, and I, if I forget to mention this, I'm going to be in major trouble. As I've already shared with the board and is now, I guess, public knowledge, Ms. Anziano has announced her retirement from Riverside Elementary School. What did I say? Riverside? Oh, she's going there next. Riverfield, Riverfield Elementary School. I'm sorry, it's been a week. But I'll say more, and she'll expect me to say more over the next coming months, and probably long past her retirement, but I just, she's, Brenda's just a fabulous principal and a great person to work with, and if you need to be told the truth, she's there. She's first in line, and she'll be last in line. We have months to go. We're going to post this position as quickly as possible. We know how important that is to any school community. School community to be involved in the next set of decision-making. We always reach out to the school communities to get their input, and we, we always have parent representation on the interviews committees, on the interview committees. So we'll be getting more in touch with the community as, after this. But for now, I just want to extend my, my congratulations and thanks to her. She, she told me that when she reached 60, oh, I shouldn't have probably said that. She's told everybody that she was going to reach retirement, and since she and I are just about the same age, I keep looking at her like, "You lucky." But no, I really wish her the best. We're going to miss her.
I've gotten many texts today. No! No! I, she was my, one of my, my principal for a long time, too. I missed her when she moved to Riverfield, and I'm definitely going to miss her, having her in the district. Kids first. Kids first, kids first, and I hope that her replacement has a similar sentiment as, as we all do. So congratulations, Brenda. And moving on to Mrs. Gerber.
So due to the continuing Board of Ed schedule, I was unable to attend another Mill Hill Building Committee meeting, but luckily, the chair, Mr. Lee, is very helpful with providing me with information. So things are continuing to move along. There are no portable trailers anywhere, you know, construction portables onsite. So basically, there are just a couple of workers who are in a classroom. That's kind of like their headquarters inside the building. They're continuing to finish up the inside punch list. They've had some discussions about some landscaping, which will be taking place in the spring, and still on budget, still due to be complete by the start of the 22-23 school year.
Thank you, Mrs. Gerber. Open board comment? Ms. Rotelli?
Thank you. I just want to take a moment to make a plea to my fellow board members, to the superintendent, to our state delegation, and just to state legislators in general. Please advocate for the well-being of our students. We've heard the stories tonight from all of the parents, talking about all of the things we've heard for the past two years, the learning loss, the teaching of fear, being afraid of each other, being afraid of getting people sick, isolation, depression, anxiety, speech delays, loss of social connections, school refusal, suicidal ideation. And I just think it is worth a call to everyone here who has a say and has a voice, to listen to our children and our families who have been asking for help and who have been ignored and dismissed. I've said it, I'll say, I've said it before, I'll say it again. I've had the ability to listen to most of the state calls for these past two years with the Department of Public Health and the State Department of Education, and the one thing that's been consistent this entire time is there, is a complete disconnect between the people at the state level who are making the guidance and what is actually happening in our schools, and it is not reflected in those meetings, and the narrative is just not true. And shame on anyone who is dismissing these parents that have spoken out. Shame on anyone who continues to hold these children's head underwater while they're drowning. To all, to our state delegation, and thank you to those who have come out saying they are going to advocate for our children, and to those who haven't, I am begging you to advocate for our kids, and I am begging the other state legislators to stand up for our children and families and give them a choice. It is time to get our kids back in a normal learning environment.
Thank you, Ms. Rotelli. Any other open board comment? Seeing none, we'll take to the public. Any members of the public? Seeing none. Motion to adjourn? Mr. Asa, seconded by Mr. Peterson. All in favor? Motion carries nine zero.